Call this regular scheduled meeting to order call roll.
Mayor Quirrell.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Mayberry.
Here.
Fabia.
Here.
Newman.
Please stand and join us in the public reading.
.............................................
First order of business tonight, we have both of office for new firefighter, EMT, paramedic. So Nick, you want to come on up? And Chuck.
Mayor, councilmen, and guests, this evening we are here to introduce Nick Labanway as a new career firefighter to our staff. Nick started his firefighter career as a volunteer with the Spring Valley Fire Department in 2007. Nick was hired part-time with Princeton Fire Department in July of 2013, and he worked with us for approximately a little over three years when he became a full-time firefighter in Preport Fire Department. When the position came open, Nick's name came up, and he was offered the position, and he started on shift October 27th of this year. At this point, I'd like to have City Clerk Pete Nelson administer the oath of office, and then as soon as that is done, Nick's girlfriend will come up and pin his badge on.
Okay, Nick, raise your right hand. Okay, I Nicholas L. Labanway.
I Nicholas L. Labanway.
Having been appointed to the Office of Firefighter EMTP.
Have been appointed to the Office of Firefighter EMTP.
In the city of Princeton.
In the city of Princeton.
In the county of Bureau in the state of Illinois.
The county of Bureau in the state of Illinois.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Firefighter EMTP.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of EMTP.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have a new role that we're going to institute tonight, and that means, and that new role is that nobody can leave. You have to stay here for the entire meeting. I'm just kidding, you guys can go. Thank you. Okay, so we'll start off tonight with a public comment, and to start off, we'll have Frank Butterfield, Illinois Historic Preservation Agency. Give us an update.
Sure.
Just your, just your name, Frank.
Frank Butterfield, I'm Director of the Springfield Office, slight correction here, Landmarks Illinois. So, we're the statewide historic preservation nonprofit organization, and just to preservation news a bit there, too, with our recent executive order as of the summer, IHPA, Illinois Historic Preservation Agency, doesn't exist anymore, they're now part of the Department of Technical Resources. So staying, largely the same function there, but part of DNR. But we're the statewide historic preservation nonprofit organization, so with a mission to basically help people save places that matter to them. And it's my pleasure, over the past year, I think this is my eighth or so time in Princeton, how Landmarks Illinois has committed to dedicating a fair share of technical assistance and support to Princeton. And I wanted to just provide an update, basically, and any questions about what we've been working on with the two national register historic districts for Princeton. Ones that we've had multiple public meetings, this is stemming out of the Main Street Revitalization Plan, and one which we have been able to, we're in the process of accomplishing because of a grant from the Richard Dreyer's Foundation, technical assistance from Landmarks Illinois, and I can't say enough about the wonderful volunteers here in Princeton, able to get this done at no cost to the city, largely we're indebted to their efforts. But just to note that as of, just slightly over a week ago, last Friday, the Illinois Historic Preservation, sorry, Illinois Historic Site Advisory Council met to review the two nominations for Princeton, along with several other nominations, it was quite a long day, and those advanced through that process pretty glowingly on the report there to go to the Department of the Interior, the keeper of the National Register for formal listing, which will probably happen within a couple months. And just as a quick, quick summary, National Register is an honorific list of our nation's base, the most important historic places. Historic for, important for architecture, stories of history, commerce is what we're looking at here in Princeton. But just again to say, that's an honorific one, so Princeton, from the federal government, will have no more regulations than they did a year ago, doesn't change anything in that regard. What it does do is open up a number, a couple, I should say, incentives, which I'll touch on just briefly. Basically, but I do want to say before that, that it is worth celebrating this as it moves forward formally. This is, it's a big step, when we were there in Springfield, a week ago Friday, LaSalle was doing downtown district, Kent Key was doing a downtown district, and Mattoo had two residential districts. And communities are trying to figure out ways to do this to recognize their history, recognize what makes them special. There's economists that have said that differentiated product is the one that commands the premium. So what do you have here that no one else has? What makes people come? What makes them want to open their checkbooks and spend all the money and hang out in Princeton? And I'll speak for myself, where I'm glad that Landmarks Illinois picked Princeton, because it is a pleasure to come here so many times. So just to say that this step forward for preservation in Princeton is one piece of your ongoing multifaceted Main Street Revitalization Plan, and I think it should be celebrated because this is what the public said they wanted with that plan, and the city has been committed to. And I think we should be, you know, be able to celebrate that we really get it done, or about to get it done, in a pretty creative, cost-effective way. And just to speak now briefly again on those incentives, because it's time-sensitive, as I stand here today, that for properties on the National Register of Historic Places, there has been an incentive, a federal historic tax credit. So again, if you don't want to do anything to your building, no new, nothing new comes, you know, no new regulations, but if you wanted to reinvest in your property, there was this incentive, there is this incentive, a 20% federal historic tax credit. And that's been a key financing component for projects, and we're looking at trying to get the Cascasia Hotel in LaSalle rehab. It's a 20-some million dollar project, the numbers just haven't crunched, but this credit is largely making that gap possible, or making, bridging that gap possible, excuse me, to the Peoria, look at what's going on in the warehouse district in Peoria, they get buildings now being rehabbed. Nothing was happening there before, suddenly they list those buildings, the National Register has tax credits to make that happen. Not just big projects, too, although numbers sometimes crunch a little easier with big projects. But I lived in Springfield, I lived in Springfield, but I had an apartment there for four years, where it was storefront building with four apartments above, and that building was rehabbed because of the federal historic tax credit. So I lived in one of these apartments that was put back into service, and basically that whole block, mine is, I lived on the Lincoln Law Office block, take away the law office, which is stateside, basically every block, every building on that block was rehabbed in thanks to this federal credit. But I come today with, to give you a couple of resources to take home, one pagers, just because, because as tax reform was announced last week, this was proposed to be eliminated. And this is a moneymaker for the federal government, while you can now use it, you'll have, as soon as this district is listed, about 80 buildings, I think, that will be eligible for this, 20% credit. It's a job creator, it invests in our local economies, and it returns about $7 for every $1 credit of federal taxes. But that advocacy is needed, and we've gotten broad support across the state, and we're working hard to show that return on investment, net value there. So only to say, this will be worth celebrating in any regard, but I would hope Princeton would have a chance to take advantage of these credits, hoping that they continue. And I'll be sticking around tonight and joining tomorrow the Preservation Commission, and just to say, wanting to help and support and work with them as they provide information and expertise and resources to help people embrace what's significant, that differentiated product that Princeton has, what's, what makes Princeton special, and empower them to reinvest in their very historic places, and use that path to build the future that Princeton wants. So we're, Landmarks Illinois, we're happy to support Princeton in its preservation efforts, we want to continue to support Princeton in its preservation efforts. So you can always think of us, and me specifically, as a resource to help you solve any of those riddles, or discuss what other communities have done, so you can take that information and build on it. So thank you, I welcome any questions, I will also leave these handouts for you, too.
Yeah, you know, this whole project I started with wanting to renovate Derris Miller Park, you know, that project brought Scott Mahappy to town, and Scott put us in touch with Frank and Illinois Landmarks, and then the Dreyer's Foundation came in with their grant, which helped us in large part put together our comprehensive plan for the city going forward. This is, I think this is just, this is a wonderful thing. I think we're going to see some progress on Main Street with the, with people that are, sure, wanting to renovate some of our historic buildings on Main Street, they'll take advantage of those tax credits. Frank's been here, I think, I think you were here early spring, like you say, you've been here about eight times.
I should get an apartment or something.
Yeah, there you go. So, you know, thank you, and thank you to Illinois Landmarks, because it's just been a, it's been a great progress moving forward, and I look forward to in a couple of months when this whole thing finalizes.
And we have membership statewide, so as this advances, too, it'll be a pleasure to tell your story, to be an inspiration for other communities across the state, too.
Just out of curiosity, the business districts on the National Register in Illinois, do you have any idea how many are?
Um, I don't off the top of my head. I do know it's, as you've seen, you have to find the resources and the way to list it, so it's not, it's not to say that districts that aren't listed aren't worthy of this, you know, there's, there's not an active surveying anywhere, and everything that's important is on there, you have to find a way to do it. But as we've been trying to figure out, to add to these incentive packages, too, like we have a pilot state tax credit, for example, that's active right now in Romford, Elgin, Aurora, East St. Louis, and Peoria, we have had communities try to get these districts done, so that if we can truly spend that statewide, that the projects then would, you know, all be ready to go. But, but this, I just wanted to say this is special here. Normally, LaSalle, look at that one, Kent Key, they're, they're digging around to find ways to fund, Peoria's about to pay for one downtown district. We were able to, thanks to Scott, thanks to the volunteers, to the city's leadership, we were able to get this done through a grant fund, basically, and a lot of local sweat and time.
Yeah, your Historic Preservation Commission, I think, was instrumental also, we've been speaking about this in the last several months publicly, to the, you know, to the public, you know, individuals and groups, and letting them know how important this is for the city of Princeton going forwards. There's been a lot of, a lot of volunteerism, a lot of, a lot of interest in this, in this project. So thank you to them as well.
Thank you, Bob. It's a pleasure to be here tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Frank, appreciate it. Yeah, any other public comments? Okay, we'll go to approval amendments to Jerry.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on Monday, October 16th, 2017.
Second.
Motion's been second, any corrections? Call roll.
Councilmembers Swanson.
Pass.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell.
Pass. Now I'll go to the approval invoices, and we'll go to City Clerk Pete Nelson.
Okay, tonight we have invoices to this cycle. In the Department of Accounts and Finances, in the amount of $199,804.08. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling $327,955.96. In the Department of Public Safety, we have bills totaling $212,845.66. And lastly, in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have bills totaling Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices, and now are submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second.
Motion's been second, any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Councilmembers Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell.
Aye, and we'll go to our regular business, and we'll stay with Pete.
All right. Okay, next on the agenda, we have ordinance O-17-22. This is an ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by the installation or use of potable water supply wells, or by any other method at or within a designated area. This is the second and final reading for this ordinance, it has been reviewed by all council members, and is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-17-022, which is prohibition of the use of groundwater.
Second.
Motion's been second, any comments? Call roll.
Councilmembers Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is a resolution number R-17-034. This is a resolution of the City of Princeton, Bureau of County, Illinois, authorizing execution and delivery of a purchase and sale agreement with 910 North Main LLC for a certain property located at 910 North Main Street, Princeton, Illinois. Mayor, this resolution has been reviewed by all council members and is submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we approve resolution R-17-034, which is authorizing the sale of property at 910 North Main Street.
Second.
Motion's been second, before we go to comments, I want to turn this over to Rachel.
Sure, so this is a building located at 910 North Main, this is between Annie Little Press and Scooters. The city took possession and received the title for this building probably a little over six months ago through some building enforcement violations at the property. Once we took ownership of the building, we put out an RFP, published an RFP, looking for people who were interested in the rehabilitation of that building, because we didn't want to see that building have to be torn down. We also posted for sale signs in the window at that building for anyone that might be interested in it. We received a proposal from 910 North Main LLC, which is made up of Steven Matthew and Ryan Kenter, they submitted a proposal to purchase and rentability of the building. We met in executive session a couple times to discuss the proposal and make sure that it meets all the state statute requirements and met our requirements for what we wanted to see happen with that building. So this resolution authorizes that sale and the purchase contract for that property.
Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmembers Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is a ceremonial resolution in support of the Illinois Bicentennial Celebrations. I'll just read a couple passages from this resolution. Whereas August 26th, 2018 will mark the 200th anniversary of the adoption of the Illinois Constitution of 1818 at the Cascasia Convention, and whereas December 3rd, 2018 will mark the 200th anniversary of the admission of Illinois to the Union as a state. And whereas the bicentennial of our statehood is an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the multicultural, economic, academic, and political contributions that Illinois and its residents have made to the nation and the world, and dropping down, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Princeton endorses the efforts of the Illinois Bicentennial Commission in promoting, planning, and executing historic, educational, celebratory, and cultural initiatives, and further resolves to recognize and celebrate the bicentennial of the state of Illinois. Mayor, this has been reviewed by all council members and is submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we approve resolution R-17-037, which supports the Illinois Bicentennial Celebration.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Call roll.
Councilmembers Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell.
Aye.
Right, next on the agenda is a resolution R-17-038, a resolution adopting a residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan under Section 104D of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. Mayor, this resolution has been reviewed by all council members and is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve resolution R-17-038, adopting a residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan.
Second.
Motion's been second, before comments, I want to turn this over to Rachel.
Sure, so this resolution is a prerequisite to the community development block grant that we are applying for, for the sanitary sewer replacement along Pleasant and First Street. This is required as, to show that we have approved this resolution as part of the grant submission, so this just outlines the issue.
Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmembers Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is resolution R-17-039. This is a resolution in support of the Illinois Department of Transportation Enhancement Program, known as ITEP, a grant for the city of Princeton. Mayor, this resolution has been reviewed by all council members and is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve resolution R-17-039, in support of the ITEP grant for the North End Business District, the depot area improvement.
Second.
Motion's been second, before comments, I'll give it to Rachel.
Sure, so this is another prerequisite for the ITEP grant, we have to pass this resolution in support of that grant before we can submit our final grant, which will be due December 1st.
Comments? Call roll.
Councilmembers Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is... Okay, no problem. Do you think I can do that? Okay. Next on the agenda is resolution R-17-041. This is a resolution authorizing the award of contracts to low bidders for a water treat, for water treatment chemicals for the 2018 operating year. Which consists of the low bids of .33 cents a pound for hydrofluoric solistic acid, received from Hawkins Chemical at, yeah, .33 cents a pound, $210 per ton for hydrated lime, received from Brent, uh, Brent Tag, I think that should be Brent Tag. $348 a ton for liquid calcium hydroxide, also received from Brent Tag. $79.6 cents per gallon for sodium hypochlorite, received from Alexander Chemical, which is a Charis, uh, sister organization. And $119 per ton for carbon dioxide, received from Air Products. All this is enumerated in the exhibit, and has been reviewed by all council members and is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve resolution R-17-041, which is accepting water chemical bids and awarding contracts.
Second.
Motion's been second, before comments, I'll turn it over to Rachel.
My only comment is that overall, the water department was satisfied with the bid results, some went down, but some also went up, but overall, they were satisfied with the results.
Comments? Call roll.
Councilmembers Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell.
Aye, thank you Pete, and we'll see you manager report.
Just a couple items, when I was talking about the CDVG grants, the resolution that we adopted as prerequisite for that, I also wanted to mention that we got all the surveys that we need for that grant back, so I want to thank everyone that helped us those, as well as all the residents that filled those out, because it was very helpful, and it looks like we'll be meeting the income requirement, so we'll be able to proceed with that. We'll have a public hearing for that, before our next meeting, there'll be a short public hearing on that grant that we also have to do. And then my last comment is just that our fiscal year 2017 audit is going to be finalized this weekend, will be presented at the next meeting.
Thank you, Rachel, love that grant, we had, we went door to door to get these surveys filled out, and it's a challenge getting people to answer the door. So it was, job well done, because they've got 75, yeah, 75, yeah, that's good. Just got a couple things, City Hall will be closed on Friday, November 10th, in observance of Veterans Day, and also from the City of Princeton Street Department, due to the upcoming Veterans Day holiday, garbage and recycling routes will be as follows. Friday, November 10th routes will be picked up on Monday, November 13. Please send your garbage and recycling out by 5:00 a.m. If you have any questions, call the Street Department at 875-2631, option two. Any old business? Any new business?
If I could, Mayor, for just one moment, I was thinking about the comments made from Frank Butterfield, and the fact that the council had the guidance to work on this, but as we talk about these volunteers, we all know that the volunteers on these committees is what really has been the success of this whole past couple of years, and I think that the volunteers are going to have to continue for us to be successful. But I really admire the people that have gotten on committees and have been active, people that have helped with, like, for example, the summer Main Street concert series, they have to set up the stages, tear that stuff down. I think about, if you, you know, if you want to volunteer at the hospital, the Gold Coast, so there's plenty of places to volunteer, and that's how we're going to continue to be successful, is with those volunteers. So I just want to thank the people that volunteered for the historic preservation for the city of Princeton, that's one of my soft spots, I like that whole thing we're trying to do, but there's so many, many other areas to volunteer, and I just encourage that if we can look into 2018 with the idea that we have volunteers, and some things we can be trained volunteers, that we'll continue to be successful.
And Ray has been quite the volunteer himself, as he has been watering our trees and flowers on Main Street for this entire year, getting up very early in the morning, and, and thank you for that, that's also been volunteered, so thank you. Any public comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting, and then go into ex- Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting, and then go into executive session, and then go to our next meeting, Frank. Okay? You're taking all my hundred.
I move that we adjourn our regular meeting and move into executive session under Illinois statutes to discuss the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body, and then be ready for the next scheduled meeting on Monday, November 20th, 7 o'clock at City Hall.
Second.
Motion's been second, call roll.
Council members, Swanson?
Aye.
Mavri?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Merrick Quirrell?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming, and this meeting is adjourned. And Frank? Go on, go to your session.